Make a motion and approve consent agenda.
Okay. And then any additional questions?
No. Rick, can you say something?
Mm-hmm. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll call the board, all those in the table.
Alright, great.
All of the boards. And then, very, 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 I wrote it out. Next, we have open session, but it's very current. It's in the five minutes. And now. We'll move on. Important operations. We'll move to the final.
I can see the, you know, getting from our spire to the ski course, maybe a little bit delayed because of, uh, getting the batteries. They have one of these things, um, from our various support, and we've still got some batteries. We've had no problem with the battery. What we didn't really notice that, uh, snow falling in winter, then the damage is being signed. He was going, I mean, being signed for the. Didn't have early enough, like, if they were off trial, it would have been off. But if you're smart, take it down in the winter to avoid them being damaged, when you put them all again, um, in the spring. Put that in place, give it the performance. So that might intense, uh, maybe it goes. And, um, we go ahead and do that, and we gotta do this.
You got room for those down there. Where would you go on?
Well, I, I still remember. So, um, you got to. Their lighting house, or my intent would be for us to change the batteries, if you feel wrong, out of the body. Um, you don't need. If I can't figure it out, then I'll go along with you, gentlemen. I, I think we'll be able to work with that.
They like to be bothered.
That's really. Other hand, I mean, should let you know, I'll be a little scared for next month or so.
Good luck.
I'm ready to make this, good morning. Right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We're doing, uh, what is it? We have, uh, minutes of the. I think, uh, very much, maybe, maybe that's it. Thank you for everybody, I'm just, uh, three hundred. Any questions on the minutes? Uh, okay, I'm, uh. Uh, credit for which, uh, we're trying to.
Um, so, and it was, I was, I did not really report that after this meeting. So, yeah, now, I know those, and then, over, as they're devised up, signing with the power. Um, we're waiting on some numbers from the average members. There shouldn't be any, my speaker was told to do those, but I'm not, no boxes. And I got this, uh. Meter, water meter increase that I have to take care of next week. And, and we'll need to, uh. You know, the library, we think we're gonna put that one out at three o'clock, it's one minute ago. Um, as far as, as far as you can find those, today we had energetics, and we do, uh, celebrate, uh, four meters. Now, so change, uh, of the dial, also. We have a lot, it will be all in here. And the disinfection season is now over, so I do the balls.
Sound good.
Are you handling the bigger hotline for the utilities?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Possible shed on Martin. Before we get to it all, I want to make sure you do, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking about, um, maybe, maybe it's on.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any more questions? Um, where do you? You're good.
Can I just say it's been a crazy couple of weeks? But we're hanging.
Any questions? Uh, this year, it's just a super.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Mostly, uh, just, uh, property, uh, discussions. But it's the. Business part. Operations, we were discussed. Close session, I can help.
Okay, we'll cover that if I have any question. Any else? Uh, report the part.
Yeah, so Parksman on the twenty seventh, we were just doing a lot of budget things, um, going over different events and budgets for what we're gonna do next year. Getting an idea of some of those things. And then talking about tree lighting and things like that, after the rest of the year, so we, we have a couple of things to do yet, but just really finishing up and. Hopefully getting some of those movies rescheduled indoors this winter, uh, in conjunction with the school. Other than that, working on budget stuff.
Okay, and, uh. We're in the grand, general, the movie, some, somewhere in the, between, um, the.
We're gonna give it a shot.
Yeah. Is it a, uh, better than the house?
Yeah, I thought about it, I think the, I mean. The school would be a good place for it, I think. So I'm working, I'm actively working with a couple of people at the school to hopefully find a weekend or something, or Friday or Saturday night, where we can put it in the cafeteria and. Do some sort of fundraiser or something off of it, and it could be kind of fun.
And we're on, uh, the.
Personnel has met a couple of times now, since our last board meeting, we met last week, and again, this week, last week, um. We started looking at some of the organizational structure of the village, uh, we have some opportunities to kind of change how we do things. Change it up a little bit. We also looked at wages, um, and then last night, we had some negotiations for a new position.
All right, that's, uh, the extent of the open session, now, you're right.
Outside of the reports, it's in the packet, yeah?
And, uh, we back to, um. You have to, uh, close it. Uh, I bring you down to the business.
Wait, wait, uh, excuse me, um, the art board minutes were missed on the agenda. And we, we had a meeting, is mainly for Bruce's, it's building a garage on the healthy own. Next to the par- parking lot, and it's partly in the floodway, so it's just kind of tricky placing the garage there. And then Bruce also asked for comments from the art board. About adding in their tuning range somewhere in the village.
Yeah. Um, it's, uh. So, yeah, what? Wow. I would just respond to the flood issue that you brought up, Senator Fringe. And with the P and R letters and stuff, we've discussed it all. I don't know why that would.
Yeah, that's, I don't know, we have to, she, she can, she should be able to hear us and everything.
Sandy, did you notice when she came in?
No.
Thank you.
This is the minutes, did we discuss this, the last four minutes?
No. No, it was, it was after the last board meeting, dark words, the cell. Just missed the, again, the agenda.
So what does that do to the permit?
Nothing, nothing.
No.
It's just information to the board.
Okay, alright.
So, I, uh, if you have any. All right, um, and it's, it's kind of, uh. Hey, we have only, we talked about the features, ways that it's got. And recommended by the, uh, sort of.
Is there any discussion there, on that?
Just made a motion for it.
Do you have something?
No, I guess, but I heard some.
I did too, of course.
Oh. Um, oh, I'm, I'll make a motion to, um, increase public works, group personal wages as discussed and recommended by the personnel committee.
I would second that.
All right, anything else on there?
Is that in our packet here somewhere that I'm missing, or? I have no idea what we're talking about.
It was in closed session, at personnel, um, there wouldn't have been any of this, because it was discussed in closed session. At personnel.
I just said, that worked.
And the.
I wasn't there, so.
This was, this was a motion. So I didn't think we put that out there.
Well, I get that, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good question, how would that normally?
Yeah, my, my, I would, it should be in close, it should be in close session tonight, and then discuss.
Yeah, maybe. That'd be good, probably.
I would prefer, because I don't.
Yeah, we're talking about, let's do that.
You're the.
But we have a motion in the second on the floor.
I wonder if we're sitting.
Um, I would be for rescinding the motion, till later in the meeting.
I was on the personnel ones, right?
All right. We'll get back to the, uh, the reports.
I don't know, I wasn't there.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
I don't think we changed.
I don't want some info.
Sorry. Everybody was.
So. That you can see, there is an email that came, um, basically from, from an engineering firm. Anybody that's not, doesn't know yet, Dollar General is looking at actively, um, either buying or leasing that property, I'm not sure, I'm guessing it's buying. But anyway, so they've got a bunch of, uh, permits, variance requests, things like that, they want to have a planning commission go over. And as part of that, um. I reached out to Roger, because he had been working with, with these, these guys before he left. And I asked him i- if it was appropriate, if this is something that he would, uh, be willing to look at for us, as discussed. Um, when we talked about his resignation letter and all that stuff, and he said yes, so I guess as far as this goes, um, I'm looking. For approval to either hire an engineering firm to look at these drawings, or to, um, have Roger take a look at it, and go from there, since he's already been involved, so.
I think we should have, um, outside engineering department take a look at it, so I'll make a motion, we have, uh, did we ever hear back from Pinnacle?
Yeah, I did not call them, because I didn't.
Okay, so I'd like to reach out to Pinnacle.
Is.
You can say, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, is that just something that the village wants there, or what, that four or nine weeks ago, or months ago, or what?
So that, so.
It's a beginning process.
It needs to go through planning commission and all that stuff.
Okay.
You want to have a head and all?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and then, which else? Um, is there any other, any other action? Board, we used to, uh, the. All in over, now, the, the, plus and minus, because we have. Barack was got, he's been out, and now, he started a process. For maybe most efficient, uh. I don't know how.
Well, that's why.
Seems like it'd be, you know, time wise, and even probably the financial wise.
I think we're, the way we're going, what we've talked about, we gotta keep moving forward, we gotta rip the bandaid off, we gotta keep going forward, I don't see going backwards. To try and get something done that we're trying to do here, moving forward. We're literally talking about creating a position, like, they're bringing in here, that's gonna handle administrative duties, I don't see the sense in going. Backwards, and then, that's fine, like Roger, but then we're on his time. It's not gonna be maybe top priority for him, he's probably busy with what he's got going on in his life, so. That's why I make the recommendation, we're gonna have to get an outside engineering firm at some point, so why not just do it now?
Yeah, I don't have any problems against, uh, four, four, either way, I just, we've used outside engineering firms in the past for stuff like this, um, a lot of prior, prior, uh, Roger. Coming in, let's, it's a couple of costs or something like that.
Yeah, we know, I think we're. Rather, would be outside consulting at this point.
I agree with that, I agree with that as well, I'm just curious as to what the, what the cost is.
Uh, engineering firm, gonna be. Probably a hundred and twenty dollars on the lowest level for an engineer. And it could go up higher, depending on what engineer you're designing the project, oh, an hour, yes.
And then, do we have anything in place with, um, Roger, I don't recall if we have any.
He offered to.
Dog monetized.
Yeah, former, however. But, nothing is, never, never talked about.
Well, we don't even have it certified, why would we say what's, and Roger wasn't doing, we don't even have anything in place. So now we're gonna have to negotiate that on time, we're trying to get this done.
Well, and the way I looked at it is, in his resignation letter, he spelled out what he would be willing to work for, for the village, and we accepted that resignation letter, so. Um, I think that's what the, end up being, so whatever, yeah, I, again, I don't, I smell a lot of military. So if Roger's gonna do this, would he do it as an employee of the village? Yeah, part-time hourly, was my, was my understanding.
That was my understanding, so.
I guess I'm indifferent either way. Said I, I don't think it's wrong to do it either way, I think that, um. As part of this, uh, just so that everybody's clear, obviously, the planning commission meeting would have been this Monday, and. They are requesting a special planning commission meeting be set this month, yeah?
They were like, just, uh, film the justice. Possibly.
The engineer was responsible, and you all, I mean.
That's why I'm getting at, is if, whether as an employee of the village at that point, or something, because, at least then we're covered, and sure. Right, so. I mean, I personally, I'd be. That's what we have discussion for, right, so.
I don't know if this will fall off topic, but is Roger going to be certifying the water and wastewater?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, and so he'll be.
So he's gonna be doing work on our behalf that way, too, so, and we will be paying him for other things, until we finally replace them for him as well.
Or you're gonna.
Or you're gonna.
All right, guys, and, so, so we're.
I'd, uh. I, I. I don't know what the precedent here is, but I would go, I would bring back the motion to. Uh, submit to the engineering firm, Pinnacle. I'll, I'll, it'll be interesting in a second at this point. Second thought.
Wait, when, do we start the, the motion again? Like, what is, we still working on Josh's motion, when he said.
I'm not sure how that's supposed to work, to be honest with you. I declared the motion failed.
Oh, no, first one failed, because nobody's sectioned.
Right, exactly. So. So whatever we need to do it.
To hire Pinnacle or Roger?
Pinnacle.
Okay.
Um, who is Pinnacle, can I ask?
They're the one that I think you mentioned, for the.
Okay, so they got a good track record, and everything, you want to recommend them, or though?
And since they.
That's just a question.
They may take longer, and sophomore for hour. Those expenses get turned back to the people who are asking it to be done, it's not a village expense.
Okay.
Right, I like, I just. So, if you know, uh, the question, I will, I will, on that, all I'm giving.
Alright.
When you carry the money. All right, let's go. A little more of whether the governor's, uh, this.
This came up, and Melissa and I put this together, there are other, there's, the main item was about the homes. And asking them to change the state statutes, so that. Communities would be informed when a licensed home comes in, so that the fire department, ambulance, police, neighbors know what's going on in their neighborhood. And then also, we talked about. How goofy the state's gotten with the levy limits and property taxes, and state aids, and we. I didn't elaborate anymore on that, I didn't know what more to say, there might be other things that you guys thought of, that you would want to, also, telling people. And do we want to invite them here, talk to them directly, or first just send them a letter? Any more elaboration, anybody wants, more points? Want to think about this for two weeks?
No, I think you guys did a nice job.
I do too. I'll make a motion, uh, approve the, the letter to Senator Spiegel and Representative Brooks' second.
Yeah.
And we're all gonna sign.
I just thought of it. I can put it on the computer still.
There you go.
All right.
I'm not gonna sign my letter. Alright.
I'll take, I'll even take your name off, this is me doing.
Okay, on the, uh, on the, on the.
Right, right.
Name.
One, four. Right, and we, uh, want to, uh, thank you. I'll be, I see.
How did this come up? Where did this come from?
Um, this was the recommendations, um, Chris.
Do I haven't even made aware of this, I guess, in the past?
Um, they're, um, as, here is, they're coming, there's this, uh, the, uh, various, other. Places, we need to put that investment to the, to the returns, this is a good thing to, you mentioned values, because, um. Your money is always available, it's not like, even, see, we can't get out, it's, uh, two years ago, or whatever, yeah, it's, it's, uh. Considered, uh, the, the returns. So, Senator, I stated, quite about the vote, for, uh, sure, and meaningful, and.
Does this resolution mean President Manzouk, Roger, both have to sign off on it, or is it just a, one person can do it?
Looks like four.
Okay. They're like signing checks, so we both have to sign.
No, we should have, uh.
Well, it says. Right, that's what I'm saying, so, we, we both have to do.
That is internal. To the.
So this is something that's been around for a while, or what, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this?
Yeah, that's been around for, uh, the time. The last time I was brought up, uh. Where, was, we made no point to the, aim at the.
Does everyone try to choose?
Well, there is.
I don't remember very, very much.
I was, uh, we were, uh.
It's local, even with, uh, the, the, uh, money there, and supporting, you know, that, you know, and, and local, and, and, uh, that's something we want.
Yeah. There was, there was, uh, you know, a sense of the freedom, while we didn't want to go with this. Um, at the time, I would imagine that interest rates were more competitive. Once we get down to, uh, the, the, uh, return. It starts, it probably, it starts with something, uh, to, you can, you know. I would imagine, on the program, it would be, if one mind wanted to go.
We'll have to discuss that, I mean, as of right now, we're just, I think we're just being included in this government investment pool, right? Didn't say what we're.
We need, we need a, a resolution, for them to. Allow us to be a member of the vote.
Well, I mean, I think it's. I think it just makes the most sense, I mean, we were elected by the citizens to, you know, trusted with their money, and I think if we're gonna get a better rate of return here than anywhere else, I think this is what we should do, so I will make a motion. To adopt Resolution twenty, twenty-two H for inclusion to the local government investment pool.
No, second, third. Is there gonna be any some discussion prior to moving?
There.
And what monies will be moved, and, and. I'd like to. Do some more reading about this particular.
That'll come before the board, and, you know, make a decision on whether we move it, any of them, all of it, and all of that.
So at this time, we're not doing really anything other than. So at this time, we're not doing really anything other than entering into this group.
That's the way I read it.
A little penis aid to help.
Is there any fees or anything associated with being a part of this? Can we get that information, is there a rush to do this tonight?
No, there is no motion.
There is no house fire, those are all great questions.
I don't know if you just, if you wanna amend the motion, Dan, I mean, to me, what would make the most sense is to, if we wanna say that we wanna get enrolled this time, but then if we wanna hear back from the administrator, they should present some to the finance committee.
About moving, I think that's, but I think Phil's concerned that there might be.
I'm just asking questions because I don't, I don't know anything about this particular topics and in order to vote them and new questions. But that's why we have a board written. Thank you. We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second to approve it.
Let's just talk about this.
I don't know about that, I don't think so. I don't, I'm pretty sure it's gotta be prior to the motion in a second.
So I think. Unless the motion descended correctly.
Correct.
I'm gonna rescind my motion and put it back to the session here. I think we should.
I'd make a motion to postpone until the following board meeting.
A second.
Is somebody gonna be assigned to look into this?
Chris is that true? Right, he must have already looked into it, so I'm assuming it's up to him to explain the benefits and why we should do it, it's not up to any of us though.
This one?
Yeah, um, but it doesn't.
It doesn't actually say it.
Though.
Right. Well. I think if he was here tonight, I don't think it'd be a problem, but he's not here, so.
Now, it's in the motion. Yeah, just for the others, I first it is included a three quarters of the former of the board. And I think that's extended, but that's just my opinion, that's just what I thought. When you're a tender as well, the. That and I'm all about the second section to one character. There's a last one to the other, the term that the vision and the plan of the manager show me a matter of contact with two quarters and versus twenty percent of it. I don't think any of that needs to be there. Is that just? I agree on the.
What you instructed.
I agree on the authority required.
This one?
Yeah.
That's six, that's seven. Cause even in the discussions that I've been talking to. On both sides.
I'm not sure.
Most of the. As the board of yours to the process, they said move to the last sentence from the period that turns the condition to the second. And then carefully so you'll change Amanda.
I don't know about amending the last sentence, I don't understand what the I don't understand what the issue is with that last sentence, I guess.
When we change the contract to.
John did, John.
It's a employment on. Employment on.
Is that not a contract, I don't know.
It's essentially, yes, um, actually, I don't know that it needs to be in there at all.
The reason, if you remember this, uh, this whole one was there to push out directly the president. And authority that wants to more or less recommend what the board should be. It's uh, he's wanting to make win and he's had an insight. Their American vision is uh
As far as the ordinance, so I'm not sure that that sentence needs to be in there at all, it does.
You talking about the last sentence of that five thirty-seven?
About terms and conditions of employment, that's.
I don't think it matters either way.
It doesn't reset the terms and conditions of the plan out. I don't, I don't know if that should be a matter of ordinance.
Well, said it's a matter of the fact that it's leading to.
Right, right, but we're putting that as part. We're, we're, we're putting that as a part of our ordinance, I don't think that's necessary.
I think.
I'd strike it and improve it all the number.
Bill just made a motion to approve the ordinance striking that last sentence.
Okay, here, maybe two quarters. Doesn't make a difference.
I'm fine with three quarters.
What's the reason behind this before? Just wanna understand, I don't really see either way here.
We have to change our ordinance to create this position.
Right, I know that. We still had contracts. Right, I mean, a contract was created, am I wrong on that?
I, we don't have contracted employees.
Yeah, right, that's why I, it's looking more like he's running. Yeah, or whatever.
Well, I mean, let's take, let's take that out of let's, let's take any individual out of this, if we're creating an ordinance, we're moving forward, right?
Yeah, we're creating a position.
Creating a position.
This is all like going to post just some shit, we should be discussed.
So, I mean, basically, by just taking out that last sentence, we're just saying that an administrator will be in the point of office and it'll be affirmed by three quarters of the full membership of the bill, membership of the village board. I don't think we have to say anything about anything in the ordinance as far as the terms and conditions of it. So that's why we're talking about just getting into the sentence.
I don't know, I feel like I have questions about that, I don't even know if we can't talk about it in open session.
We wanna.
You wanna know what those conditions are prior to adopting the ordinance, is what you're saying.
I would look, I would I prefer to leave this in there, I guess, but.
To, to address the other um plan injection is about two thirds of the quarter. The ability to back and carry the award is about two thirds of all.
So it's, yeah.
So it's not a I don't believe it's uh, the government statute.
In our ordinances, the village marshal is two thirds of all.
I'm fine with it being two thirds of all, but I think we should strike that term.
That's for removal of office. And it's a appointed. I'm just saying we're looking at bringing someone on board, but that's really where they wanna go with it. I'm sorry, the contracts.
That's where you want to go with it?
That's where this person I'm looking at, Harry, wants to go.
Yeah.
Either, either way, this is not, if we take that sentence out, it doesn't say we can't enter a contract with an employee, right, this is just saying that it's by appointment and affirmed by a certain amount.
I just think it's nice, we've got a lot of moving parts with this. We've got a lot of moving parts with this, so I think it would be in our best interest to have something like this.
You think it's good to have a contractor?
I think it's good to have a contract.
I think the question isn't, should we have a contract with this person, the question is, should it be in the ordinance that we have to have a contract? I think if you leave a blank in the ordinance, you can do it either way. This is just approving the ordinance saying we're creating this position.
Some motion on the table too, and I will, and I'll amend it, amend it to match the rest of what we have and say two thirds vote. Um, but to strike the terms and conditions sentence.
Yeah, hold on, I don't know if I like that either, because now you pretty much put someone in position, now if they don't like the last sentence, they don't vote for it, you dismiss it, then you could potentially miss two thirds. So it almost has to two separate motions.
I'm sorry, Josh.
If you, the motion you made or whatever, the motion you made was you wanted to change it from three quarters to two thirds and to strike out the last sentence, so if someone wants to vote that they don't, they like for example, if we're gonna strike out, I'd vote name, so if I do that and someone else votes that, now we're pushing that two thirds.
I see what you're saying, so let's, let's break it up, so I, I would, let's, let's go back again. I'll make a motion to uh, strike the sentence. The terms and conditions of employment uh, should be contracted between the village and the first.
So you're making a motion to amend.
I meant to just the, just the sentence.
Just the sentence, okay.
My original motion.
Okay. Man. Yeah, he said I.
Yeah.
And that was just amending the ordinance, not approving.
Correct, so now it comes back with the last sentence would be.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those. What's been, there is. Okay, we got, on the floor now, we have the motion amended. The read three quarters, clearly two thirds. Four hundred and fifty of the board without the last sentence.
So section one oh five dash three will read appointment, the office of village administrator shall be an appointed office, the village administrator shall be appointed by an affirmation vote of two thirds of the full membership of the village board. I'm sorry. Yes. I said thirty, sorry, thirty seven.
Okay. The motion to prove ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four with the members.
Chris, would you second?
I second them.
All right, so we have five reasons, we put this first two per ten minutes in our court order. Uh, we're having a. The main name is in the twenty and thirty words of the community is fifteen thousand. Yeah, that target will you sign into the vote to ensure that's all sort of.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, we should probably hire the guy before we start calling him.
Who's not hired yet, is what I said.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash five. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty two dash five.
A second.
There's a couple of corrections.
I'm sorry.
Which?
Just typeable corrections.
Yeah, I don't want to in seconds, I'm going to have a discussion.
Okay, um, ordinance is spelled on the top. And the numbers are. One oh five thirty seven and one oh five thirty eight are repeated from the previous. Ordinance, so it should be, uh, one oh five dash. Thirty nine. And one oh five dash forty.
I'm scared.
Do they have the third section on the board? Or do you have to take a look at the section?
I did. I did, yeah, this is, this will correct. The number scheme.
I'll amend my motion to include those corrections.
I'll still second.
I'm going to include the correction of your.
What?
Must be.